Councilmember Ross.
Her microphones, their mics are full.
Okay, thank you, yay. Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Gin.
Here.
And Height.
Present.
Acquorum is present, sir.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Height is going to lead us in prayer.
I can't hear the mayor.
Councilmember Height, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, mayor.
All right, say, give us a good prayer, will you?
You're ready, okay. Everybody, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we lift up our prayer tonight with thankfulness for your non-Indian grace and the many blessings that we receive. The Bible tells us and reassures us that you do hear our prayers and that you will answer our prayers, and for that we are greatly eternally thankful. Tonight, we lift up you, our nation, our state, and our city. We lift up our leaders. We lift up our armed forces and our military. We lift up our uniformed personnel that protect us and serve us here. We lift up our first responders here and there. We lift up our healthcare workers, way too many to count, here and there. And we lift up all those that work in essential businesses and industries, both here and there. Lord, we pray for a unified nation that will work together to defeat this invisible enemy that is waging war on our cities and our towns, our states and our nation. Lord, we pray for a vaccine. Lord, we pray that you will watch over us, guide us, strengthen us, protect us in the coming days, weeks, months, and years. And, Lord, we pray that you will help us to make decisions tonight that will benefit the citizens of our city. And, Lord, we pray that our words, our thoughts, our actions will be pleasing to you. And forgive us of our sins, and in Jesus Christ's name I do pray. Amen.
Amen, thank you very much. Call me after our meeting, Charlie, tonight, will you?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, communications, we, what about the minutes? How about a motion to accept?
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to approve the minutes, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We've got one, two, three, four. Communication, do you want to pull any of them? Anybody want to pull one? How about a motion to accept one through four?
To accept one through four.
Second.
A motion to second one through four, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Consent agenda, R 2078 through R 2082. Does anybody want to pull any of those? Seeing none, how about a motion?
R 2081.
Say that again.
R 2081, I just wanted to read.
You want to pull it?
Well, no, I don't want to pull it, just, yeah, I want special emphasis on it. And, Mayor, I remember my text due today.
Yeah, without objection, Councilmember Height would like to be a co-sponsor on R 2081.
So we're not pulling that?
Well, let's just vote on it and then, and then read it.
Okay.
Is that all right with you? All right, how about a motion to accept a consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, any opposed, say the same sign. Thank you very much. Read R 2081, please, Ms. Whitby.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application on behalf of the City of North Little Rock for 2020 Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP grant funds for, for the Recycle Bikes for Kids program.
Thank you very much. Any comments?
I just wanted to make a short comment. For those of you that do not know about Recycle Bikes for Kids, it's located down on, down there by, I don't know, or Skippy Jones High School and where else they're, where that used to be. But anyway, they give, I don't know how many bikes they give away to kids, deserving kids each year down there, but that is a wonderful program. It's, and I'm sure Linda and Maurice are aware of it, but for those of you that don't know about it, you'll go down there sometime, just take a look around. That is a great program, and I really am glad that we're addressing, doing some funding for them, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
R 2083, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a second amendment to residential recyclable material collection and processing agreement with Waste Management of Arkansas, Inc., the City of Little Rock, the City of Sherwood, and the Regional Recycling and Waste Reduction District.
Okay, we've been working with Waste Management on this forever, it seems like. But we went to them and said, our contract's going to end in March of 2021. And they've been working diligently to bring back a proposal to us to extend this contract for three more years and how much it would cost. And our staff has been doing a tremendous amount of work trying to figure out what the market is and what's available out there. They came back with the proposal that you have in your hands, that you can see how much it's going to cost, starting in, in '21, and then how much it's going to be in '22 and '23. Well, we have to make some sort of commitment that we're all in, because if we're not in, we're going to, the price changes. If, if North Little Rock backs out, or Sherwood backs out, or if Little Rock backs out, then those numbers change. And, or if we chose to go out on the street. We've done a little bit of that work, and we feel like the price that Waste Management gave us is very, very, very good price. So, I just need y'all's direction on what you want to do, if you want me to go forward. Little Rock and Sherwood is going to do the same thing. And, you know, I'll definitely come back to you with the final contract. But this is just saying, okay, we're all right with this, keep moving forward, bring back the final contract. The final contract will be something similar to what we've had in the past, and you know the dollar figures. So, with that, we're the first ones to do this. I anticipate Sherwood and Little Rock are going to do it in the next two weeks. So, thoughts? Alderman Height, Councilmember Height. Height.
I just, what are we currently paying? And I see that adding gas is the major change in this, other than the rates. What are we currently paying, Mayor?
It's $4 and something. It's going up about a dollar. Ms. Ross and I figured that out the other day. Ms. Ross, you got an answer for that?
You know, it will go up $1.10 a month. We're currently at $4.29 a month, and it will go to $5.39 the first year. But the second year, it only goes up $0.19, and then the third year, it goes up $0.20.
Right, and that includes glass, the bringing back glass. So, that was always the biggest complaint that I was getting, that we didn't do glass. Ms. Gin, you had a comment? No, Ms. White?
No, I don't think.
Councilmember Robinson.
Ms. Robinson.
I'd just like to say that people in Ward Two are really happy about us now recycling glass. They were real concerned, but now that we're recycling glass, they're happy about it. I just want to throw that out there.
Okay, any other questions? I don't think I have a motion, do I? I need a motion.
Move for adoption.
Ms. Height.
Second.
And a second, Mr. Taylor. Any other questions or comments? On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor. Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Okay. R 2084, Mayor Smith.
Before we go, we've got a bunch of people in queue that are wanting to speak on different pieces of legislation. Best I can tell, they're all are here to answer any questions. So I'm not going to call them up to talk now unless there are any questions on any of these rezones. So, if you're, if you're out there on, on any of this stuff, hang on, and if there's any questions when we, when we call that legislation, then you, we'll call you up to, to talk.
Well, and if Tina Wood, Matt Bell, and Bailey Mole, they can all go if, if they haven't already. They can all hang out.
Did we do? Okay, yeah, so Tina, Matt, y'all can, y'all can go off if you want to. Bailey with Waste Management, you can go off too. But Blake Jackson, and Jason, and Laura, and Stacy, please stay on until we get to your legislation. Okay. R 2084 and R 2085 are condemning structures, so I'm going to call a public hearing for those right now. Going to call a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on 314 and 316 East 20th, or?
Mr.?
905 Cypress Street.
No, and, yes, sir, you'll come to the podium.
Sir, come up and identify yourself and, and tell us what you got to say.
Yes, I own 905 Cypress, and I already acquired a permit to start working on it. I have income information that shows the funds that I can have to work on it. Today was raining, but I can start tomorrow.
Is this the burnout?
Yes, yes.
Okay. You know, we have a procedure, if you, if you want to try to rehab a house that's been condemned. And you need to get with our city attorney's office, and you'll have to post a bond on what it would cost to tear the building down. And if you did that, then we could work out a contract with you to give you time to renovate the house, okay?
Yeah, I'm a general contractor, so I'm aware of the process on renovating them. I have done 903 Cypress before, about 12 years ago, so I'm very familiar with the process. As far as the construction process, but I will do what is required to be in, in line with the law and your requirements.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll vote on this right now, and if we vote to condemn, then you'll need to contact the city attorney's office in the morning and work out a rehab agreement.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for coming in. Okay, how about a motion on R 2084?
Will you adjourn that?
Yeah, all right, we're going to adjourn the public hearing and call R 2084.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 314 and 316 East 20th Street in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter. Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R 2085, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 905 Cypress Street in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period, period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Give me a motion.
Move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R 2086, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the City of North Little Rock as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move and adopt.
Second.
A motion and a second. Call a public hearing. Anyone here online to speak about grass-cutting liens at Pulaski County Tax Collectors? Seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor. Taylor. Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you. Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Ordinances, O 2058, Mayor Smith and Councilmember Baxter.
Okay, I'm going to read it, and we can discuss it just a little bit, then I'm going to hold it. So go ahead and, and read it.
An ordinance to repeal portions of the old zoning ordinance, ordinance number 7697, and all amendments thereto adopting a new zoning ordinance, first reading.
Okay, anybody want to make any conversation on this? So while, I'm going to hold it for two weeks, if that's all right with you, Councilmember Baxter? Yes, sir. Okay.
Oh, I was just going to say, yes, we can hold it. I was just saying that the, the folks down at Planning have done a great job. You know, they took out a lot of table abuse, you know, references that don't exist anymore. They've done some great work in this and, to be a co-sponsor on it.
Yeah, and I agree, we've worked on this for maybe a couple of years, and so it's been a long time coming. But I had several comments that we would like to give others a chance to make comments on this. So that's why I'm going to hold it, and then we can call it at the next council meeting, okay?
Do you need to convene a public hearing tonight?
Yes, and we can convene another one in two weeks, but this is on the agenda for a public hearing tonight.
Okay, I'm going to call a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this ordinance number 2058, online or in person? Seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing. We'll have another public hearing at the next meeting. Okay?
Okay, next item, O 2059, Councilmember Ross.
Please call it.
Ms. White, did you have a question?
It was just, I'd like to be added as a sponsor on that legislation.
Without objection? Thank you.
On which one, the previous one or this one?
2058 or 59?
Um, yes. On zoning.
Okay, the?
58.
58, okay.
58, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Why don't we just all sit on it? You know, I'd just, you know, I'd like to be a co-sponsor too.
On 58? On 58?
58. The whole council may want to be on there, so.
I think that'd be a career accomplishment.
Who doesn't want to be on there? Anybody that doesn't want to be on there? All right, we'll put everybody's name on there, without objection.
At all, okay.
Okay.
All right, O 2059, Councilmember Ross.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 9245, which granted a special use to a daycare in R 3 Zone for property located at 2015 Main Street in the City of North Little Rock, first reading.
You can spend the reading.
Second.
Got a motion to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call a public hearing. Anybody here are online wanting to speak regarding O 2059? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Any comments or questions? How about a motion?
Ms. White, header.
Tell me if I can make?
Ms. White? Ms. White?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make a comment that I've focused on, because I was concerned about the children crossing the street, and they have a, DHS has a plan in place that allows for the children, the daycare workers, to carry the children across the street safely. It's a kind of like a field trip portion, but I was concerned about that.
Okay. All right, Ms. Ross.
Yeah, I just, you know, we have approved this, and we approved the playground. The previous daycare there, they did take them across the street, but, but this new one, we were hoping that they would be able to get the playground on the property. However, there were so many drainage issues that was, the location where they were and where they put it. So this was the only option for them to go back what the previous daycare had done. And DHS has?
Sure, that's a good group. Do we have a motion?
You have a motion, but no second.
How about a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, on the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
O 2060, Councilmember Robinson.
Please call it.
And?
Oh, I'm sorry, Linda, that's yours.
Call it.
An ordinance rezoning property located at Esplanade Circle in the City of North Little Rock from R 3 to R 4 zoning classification to C 6 zoning classification by amending ordinance number 7697, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
How about a motion?
Move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions or comments? On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris. Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
O 2061, Councilmember Height.
Please call it.
An ordinance rezoning property located at 5101 McClanahan Drive in the City of North Little Rock from R 4 zoning classification to C 4 zoning classification by amending ordinance number 7697, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes. Move for adoption, but let me, I guess the explanation, a quick explanation, is that this is one of those that comes up every so often during my term of city council, where you've got a commercial building sitting in a, on a residential zoned piece of property, and they're just, just clearing this up a little bit. This is a, already a commercial building there, so just changing the zoning from R 4 to C 4.
Thank you. Ms. Gin? Ms. Gin?
I talked to Stacy Medlock, and she said that it originally was a church property. Then she took it over, you know, for her realty. Now she's selling it back to the church, and the church wants it rezoned back the way it was originally, which it should be.
Good deal, we want to help Stacy if we can. So, we have a motion to adopt?
Yes.
We do, on the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
I just, Stacy's on the line, I didn't know if she needed, if she wanted to speak or if she's just here, but.
She was here for questions.
Okay, all right, yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
O 2062, Councilmember Robinson.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a waiver of sidewalk requirements of Section 12.21.8 of the zoning ordinance for property located at 1601 East Fifth Street in the City of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend the reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Bueller. Baxter, I'm sorry. I had in my head that movie, Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
I, I got to ask where that came from.
Bueller's Day Off, when the teacher keeps saying Bueller, Bueller. That got in my head during the roll call. So sorry, so sorry.
Steve is retired right now. All right, we got a motion by Ms. Robinson, a second by Mr. Taylor to adopt, on the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?[1291.71]